I move that the agreement between the City of Bristol and the Cast of Beatlemania for a performance on June 20th, 2015, or to take any actions necessary.
I have a motion to your head. I move that the agreement between the City of Bristol and the Cast of Beatlemania be approved, and that the mayor, or acting mayor, be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol. Further move this matter, we refer to the Corporation Council to prepare, handle, or review any necessary documents to effectuate said agreement. May I ask for a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Hearing none, all in favor. I oppose the motion passes. Motion two.
You will advise the Bristol Sports Hall of Fame to sell alcoholic beverages at the Memorial Boulevard School on Saturday, June 20th, 2015, in conjunction with the Cast of Beatlemania concert, and to take any action as necessary.
Okay, remotion. Yeah, I'll take your hand. I move that Bristol Sports Hall of Fame be authorized to sell alcoholic beverages at the Memorial Boulevard School on Saturday, June 20th, 2015, in conjunction with the Cast of Beatlemania concert, provided it has obtained a valid liquor permit and supplies the city with the appropriate insurance certificate, naming the city as an additional insurer. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council for compliance and verification.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose the motion passes. And then number three.
To accept the recommendation from the Bristol Downtown Development Corporation regarding Renaissance Downtown's at Bristol LLC financing, development, and leasing plan for Depot Square, and to take any actions necessary.
Okay, remotion. How read the motion. I hereby move that the City Council accept the report of the Bristol Downtown Development Corporation from May 18th, 2015, and place on file.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose the motion passes. Adam Port.
Presentation for Renaissance Downtown's at Bristol LLC.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public, members of the BDDC, and Corporation Council, and all the staff that are here this evening, Bristol Rising members that are here. I'm not going to give a whole presentation this evening, I just wanted to speak briefly about the submission that we put in. You know, Dawn's here with me this evening, and our team, and you know, we just wanted to reiterate our excitement and commitment to this project. We have been working really hard for the last five years as a public-private partnership, and I think we've accomplished some amazing things. While we aren't where we all wanted to be by now, these projects are obviously very difficult, and we think that with our collaboration and cooperation, we have come to a place now where we actually have a financing, leasing, and development plan that makes sense. What we heard from the BDDC two weeks ago in their recommendation was that they believed that we were on the right track with a mixed-use project. They believe that this is the right thing, as we do, to revitalize this downtown. We also heard that they felt that there was going to be the necessity for city participation from a financing standpoint to make this dream a reality. What we did hear as well is that the proposal that we put forth raised some questions. It raised some questions that were not answered to a detailed level, it raised some questions that were not answered for our investors, and since about a week and a half ago, the BDDC made a recommendation not to approve our plan, we recognized that they needed more information. And in order to approve a plan, it needed to provide all the i's dotted and all the t's crossed that this public-private partnership would like to see before we move forward with this development. So we've worked since then, over the last week and a half, on trying to adopt some of those i's and cross some of those t's. We're happy to have some of those conversations. We recognize that there are still things that need to be addressed, and we've begun to address those. But with that, we do feel again that this is a plan that makes sense. It's a plan that can bring this development to fruition, it's a plan that can show revitalization in this downtown in the near term, it's a plan that, in our opinion, has stretched the limits as far as possible for public participation from a financing standpoint. The proposal put forth is quite dramatically different than what we were kicking around as a partnership last year, where in this building, we were talking about somewhere in the range of $12 million in bonding. We've done a lot of hard work as a partnership to find a way to get this project to come to fruition with a lot less commitment from the city. We've crafted a proposal that includes new financing from private entities, that doesn't even look for any sort of return on the $2-plus million that has been invested by the developer thus far. We were looking for assistance from the city in two forms. One is financing, excuse me, bonding that would help to build infrastructure. So approximately $3 million would go towards roads, sewer, other infrastructure, as well as parking, a public piazza, all types of infrastructure that would normally be provided for and assistance by the city is for things such as an industrial park or other types of developments. We recognize how important the public piazza is, and unfortunately, from an underwriting perspective, we needed assistance with that. The other form of investment that we're looking for the city to potentially participate in was in the form of $3.9 million as an investment in the retail space. Now, the way we've crafted this proposal is that that investment would go in, and we would do all the work with the city to make sure that that investment is returned by the net revenues from the retail space. So the 20-plus thousand square feet of retail would basically pay the city back over the time period it takes to pay the city their money back, plus a return, and we proposed a return. The remainder of the financing that we propose as part of the package comes in the form of two financing avenues. One is through the state's competitive CHAMP financing program. This is a program that has about $20 million this year in this round that is available for projects very similar to this. We've gotten a lot of excitement from the state on this project, especially because it's a downtown revitalization project, and they feel we're in a pretty good position to receive an award from that project. It is a competitive project, so this $20 million will go to communities throughout the state, whether Bristol is one of them or not one of them. So we're hoping that we can be competitive and actually garner that money to bring this project to fruition. The other portion of the financing comes in the form of $8.7 million in loans. So this is a loan from the state, similar to that you would get a permanent mortgage or a construction loan from a bank. It pays a rate, it just happens to be a more competitive rate. So whereas the banks would look for to provide 25-year money at 5.75% or 5.6% in interest rates for this project, the state is offering money over 40 years at about 4.66%, which is very competitive and makes the numbers work a lot better so that we can ask less from the city, as little as possible from the city. The new money that will be put in as equity in this project is only looking for an 8% going in cash-on-cash return, which is about as aggressive as you're going to get in this market. So we feel very strongly that since last year, we've done a lot of work in partnership with the BDDC and the city to come up with a creative solution that lessens the burden to the most extent possible on the city, but allows to bring a project to fruition that everybody wants to see, which is a mixed-use project that contains residential and retail. This retail space will help the virility in downtown, this residential space will help support the retail space, as well as the existing retail that is in and around the area. And it will also bring to fruition the public piazza, which has had a lot of excitement over the last four or five years, as everyone knows. So we feel that we've come a long way, we're excited to continue to move this process forward. Again, we recognize that the BDDC felt that there were some things that needed to be buttoned up, and there were some questions that were still remaining, and we're happy to move forward with that, and we're excited to move forward with the city to bring this project to fruition. So with that, I appreciate it, Mayor, and if there are any questions.
Any questions?
Ryan, specific to the deadline that you're trying to make for submission to the state.
Sure.
So where are we in that orbit in terms of what happened on May 18th, and what you envision happening between now and the submission date?
Sure. So what we were looking for, and what the state requires for the June 10 submission, is simply a soft commitment from the city. So that would mean that there would be nothing in writing, the city would have a lot of outs if things weren't working out the way the city wanted them to work out, but the state is looking for some sort of soft commitment from the city that they'd be willing to move forward with this type of financing package, which will allow us to continue to push forward with submitting on June 10. If we're unable to receive a vote, approval, or a soft commitment from the city to move forward with that, then we would be in a position where we would have to button up all the items that need to get buttoned up, and that would probably take us to the December submission of the CHAMP and CHFA financing process, which is the next round. And what is available, which is something that we've had preliminary discussions with some of the BDDC members about since the vote, what is available is a pre-development application. So if there are questions that need to be answered that cost some money, say the city wanted to vet our investors further, and they needed to spend, instead of spending taxpayers' money to do so, we could apply for a pre-development grant. It's actually a low-interest loan that we would actually have to pay back over time, that we could utilize for the city to do some of that vetting, for us to finish the construction drawings, because that was one of the concerns that was raised, is that the construction drawings didn't get to the 90% level that we had hoped to get to. So there's a myriad of opportunities and options for us to look at, but the bottom line is that without a vote, we're unlikely to obviously be able to submit for June 10.
Okay, so have we defined what a soft obligation, or...
It would come in the form of letters of support and letters of commitment, and they would be contingent upon negotiating full agreements, and contingent upon the financing to come from the private investment, as well as the state investment.
And so you eventually have to bring all this additional detail and reports back to the BDDC?
Correct. The way the process works is that you submit for the money in an application, and it's an iterative process. So the state comes back to you, and they say, hey, you're a little deficient here, we'd like to see you change this in the underwriting, and you go through an actual process with them whereby you negotiate with them, the city would be at the table, and we'd all be sitting at the table together, discussing how these things are going to work. Items were brought up such as subordination of loans, and how that would work, and one of the concerns that the BDDC members brought up was, well, where would the city sit in that stack? And what I had explained was, in all of our conversations with the CHAMP and the headfolks from the state, basically the way the process works is that on something like the subordination issue, we'd sit down at the table with them, and because the city is potentially willing to commit significant funds to make this project happen, there could be a conversation about a different form of subordination than they would normally be used to. So that's just one example of the many things that would come up, but ultimately, there would be full agreements negotiated for all these items. The investor would be fully vetted by the state, you know, the investor, excuse me, the state and the city would be having conversations as to how money would work, what they're comfortable with versus what you're comfortable with. So really, it's, when I say soft, it is fairly soft, contingent upon everything else working out, basically.
But we're becoming victim of the clock at this point.
Correct.
I have a quick question. So how could we give a soft commitment even if we haven't determined if we're going to invest the $6.9 million?
That's what this financing, leasing, and development plan was for, Mayor. So if the city was comfortable with what detail we've provided in the financing, leasing, and development plan, then the vote would be potentially to approve that plan, and then it would be to provide those soft commitment letters to the states for us to prepare and submit the application on June 10, which was the direction that we were going, but the BDDC obviously made their recommendation.
Any other questions?
How long will the payback be on this project?
So the payback on the retail space, plus what we put in was an 8% return, is estimated at very conservative retail rents at 20 years. The $3 million in infrastructure, depending on the economic development for induced and other economic development that would occur just from this development happening, it could be even less time than that, just through the taxes that we will be paying, and the other inducement of taxes that occur.
Any other questions?
I have a technical question, probably best suited for you. We've talked about the soft costs and the infrastructure issue, probably since last year. Did we ever formally vote on that?
We did. We voted to, I believe it was $2.1 or $2.2 million for the infrastructure and piazza.
No.
Took a formal vote on that.
I thought we did, but I couldn't recall when. So if that, does that constitute something that would be termed soft support as you were to move forward on a June 10 application?
I believe it would constitute that with a letter that would corroborate that. However, obviously, the money has to match what's in the underwriting, so if it was less than $3 million in our underwriting, believes we need to make that happen, it would probably be an efficiency in the application.
It's not $3 million, $6.9.
Yes, just on the infrastructure piece is what I was referring to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we're going to the public participation. I'm going to ask Jen, the chairwoman of the BDDC, if you could come up and explain how we got here tonight, what's your board thought, and why you voted the recommendation that you did, please.
I didn't say her last name, because I'm not going to say her. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the Downtown Development Corporation that came tonight. Jennifer Arisimowicz, chairwoman of the Bristol Downtown Development Corporation. I guess I want to start by saying first of all that I think the board was pretty clear, and hopefully the council members have had an opportunity to listen to some of the tapes or read the transcripts of our meeting, that we're very supportive of mixed-use downtown. The board believes it is what is in the best interest of Bristol. We really would like to see this project happen and have a walkable, livable downtown that a lot of board members, myself included, have been working towards for about the past eight, eight years now, eight years and. That being said, we have a contract, and that contract governs the way that my board has operated from day one. And that contract, unfortunately, doesn't provide, at least from our reading, for so-called soft commitments. What was presented to us, what was supposed to be presented to us, was a finance, development, and leasing plan for this project. And according to the terms of the developer agreement, when the BDDC recommends to the council a finance, development, and leasing plan, and if the council accepts that recommendation, the developer has the right to close. They have the right to close once that plan is approved. So the way we viewed it, and we were very clear with Renaissance, what we needed when we sort of came down this path. And we did work very hard with Renaissance, Renaissance worked very hard, we worked very hard with them. But in order for the BDDC to take the step to make a recommendation of a finance, development, and leasing plan to the council, we needed to be sure that this project was in fact ready to close, and this is something that we felt was actually going to happen, and this is something that we were very supportive of. That meant that first and foremost, we needed to know who the investors are. The PDA is very clear, it's apparent that there are going to be other people involved, that Renaissance may or may not have 50% voting control, which is a requirement in the PDA, and that if they are no longer going to have 50% voting control, the city, through the BDDC first, has the right to vet the investors, make sure these are people we want to be long-term landlords and business partners with. That's not finalized, the ownership structure's not finalized, the investors are not finalized. So that was one big issue that we had. We had asked for, and we think the PDA is clear, we should have had draft construction contracts, shovel-ready, you know, a path to permitting, all of that should have been put in place. We also, when we did the Seventh Amendment in January, specifically said that we wanted to see the CHAMP application. In other words, the city was supposed to be the last step. We were the last signature at the bottom of the paper. The investors were lined up, they had their letters of intent and soft commitments in, we had the draft construction contracts, we had the CHAMP application. We didn't get the CHAMP application, we didn't get draft construction contracts, we didn't get letters of intent, again, the ownership structure isn't finalized yet, and we understand again, Renaissance, and especially Ryan, has been working very hard towards this, but we as a board, looking at the contract that governs how we operate, did not feel that we were able to approve this finance, development, and leasing plan. So I want to be clear, the board never reached the merits of whether or not the city should put in approximately $7 million. Now, the board is supportive, and has been supportive, of public investment in the downtown. We believe it has to happen, and we believe that's evidenced by the fact that we are the ones that recommended to the City Council the vote to put money into the infrastructure and the piazza, which the City Council, as you just mentioned, did vote to do. We did not reach the merits of any additional money being put into this project, because quite frankly, we didn't have enough information in front of us to make that decision. So I understand what Renaissance was asking for, they're asking for a soft commitment, that the city would be willing to put in $7 million under certain circumstances. We don't believe that the PDA gives us the flexibility, worthy ability, to vote on that, and the finance, development, and leasing plan, the four corners of that plan, did not meet the contractual requirements and the expectations that we set out for Renaissance of what they had to come forward to us in order to vote. Understand that we are at the 11th hour, we passed the Seventh Amendment back in January, again, we were expecting 90% construction contracts, we were expecting ownership structures. Right up until the time that the finance, development, and leasing plan was submitted, we thought we were going to get that stuff, and we didn't get it, and it was disappointing to us. It was, you know, one of the most difficult votes we had to take, I think. We put a lot of thought and a lot of effort into it, it's not something that we take lightly. I think every member of this board wants to see something happening, and something happening soon across the street, but again, we take our obligations very seriously and didn't feel it was something we could perceive of.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Next, we're going to go on to public participation. As you know, you have three minutes, and the first one is Richard Avridge.
Name and address for the record, please. Richard Avridge, 60, Michigan Avenue. I'm in favor of a vibrant redevelopment in Depot Square, but I'm also a realist. After five years, seven contract amendments, millions of taxpayer dollars, and many delays, it's time to evaluate our involvement with Renaissance Downtown. They originally presented a beautiful plan for Depot Square to be financed by private equity, not taxpayers. Renaissance failed. They changed to starting with an apartment building. The independent appraiser hired, reported the plan would fail and cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Renaissance failed. Then it was erect Building B first, and ask Bristol for millions more. A second independent appraiser was hired and told us Bristol didn't need more apartments. We wouldn't be able to charge market rates, and that even if we did, it wouldn't come close to generating the pedestrian traffic needed to attract businesses. Renaissance failed. Then it was changed to have Bristol pay millions more, and to go after the state for many more millions. State money changes the apartments from market rate to subsidized housing. Renaissance failed. A survey of Bristol citizens showed they wanted lower, not higher, taxes, and had very little interest in apartments. More citizens wanted to just clean up the lot than to follow the Renaissance plan. Renaissance failed. The finished building will be worth less than cost. Renaissance failed. Private equity people show little, if any, interest. The independent appraisers tell us Bristol didn't need more apartments, and that the plans would fail. Citizens tell us they wanted lower taxes, not more apartments, and the state tells us we don't need more subsidized apartments. Renaissance failed. Now Bristol is considering changing regulations to force businesses into Depot Square. What kind of vibrant redevelopment needs to force businesses to come downtown? Renaissance failed. From the beginning, Renaissance has given us faulty, incomplete, and misleading information that has cost citizens millions. Now we're told this subsidized housing will be a stepping stone to the rest of the project that will fill the remainder of the lot with shops, offices, and apartment buildings. Really? When has subsidized housing attracted anything but more subsidized housing? We can't even rent the first four businesses without more subsidies. Renaissance failed. Renaissance couldn't produce the data they were told was required, so the BDDC voted 100% to reject the plan. Renaissance failed. We're talking about a perennial, bottomless taxpayer money pit, so something is not better than nothing. Don't turn Depot Square into a high-density subsidized housing project that will cost taxpayers millions for many, many years. We need new developers with new ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Johnson.
Richard Johnson, 54, from Rose Lane. I'm not as well-prepared as he was, but I share his sentiments line for mine. I have a bunch of questions, and I know you're not going to answer them, because that's not the format, but I hope to provoke a little thought, if I could touch upon something you hadn't thought about. Looking over a little bit of information on the past proposals from the beginning to today, I came upon something where the original proposal said that we were supposed to, the city was supposed to get $2.1 million for the land. Is that still on the table, or are we just giving them a Christmas present, they get the land free, plus our money to build something? And on the original proposal, there was no mention of any financial participation to be paid for by the taxpayers. We certainly jumped into that. Then they didn't meet the original deadlines to come up with their financial plan, so they got several postponements, and they come up with several different proposals. And then the mayor paid for an independent evaluation, and the independent evaluation by a real estate developer who is creditable, and I have to think he knew what he was doing, and I think the mayor knew what he was doing when he hired him, and his judgment was the proposal as presented at that time was doomed for failure. Now Renaissance, by its own admission, says the retail portion of it is a failing project, so they want no part of it. You want retail, you pay for it, and you take your chance to send the rent. And they were also, when they came up with their financial proposal, after four, I think they only got four years, and they ran into five because they got an extension, I don't really keep track of the time, but I know we got an extra year thrown in there because they weren't ready to handle things, even though they had time to repair, and I cannot believe that when it came up to the deadline and they didn't have the financing together, that it suddenly hit them between the eyes 30 days before then. They knew all along, they were just playing us from day one, but that's another issue. Anyway, they were supposed to have prospective tenants, and I don't, I've never heard of a prospective tenant for retail to this day, so I don't know what that's all about. Okay, I'm not as organized as the other guy. Okay, so now we're going to become landlords, we're going to take over the retail. These guys are supposed to be professional real estate developers, and they build retail places, and they find prospective tenants. They've had five years to come up with some prospective tenants. Which one of you on that panel is better prepared to do the job than what they did? And they come up with zero, so what are you going to come up with? And I think I speak for everybody in the room, if not, it's only one or two that maybe differs with me, but like Mr. Avridge said, I am not opposed to developing downtown. I was very excited about it and open-minded when they first came around, and we had our pop-up piases, and it was fun, and I thought, well, this is going to be a great thing. But, people, it takes more than a wish. This downtown development, as people wish for it, I'm totally in favor of having something there that's going to bring people down and have a pedestrian-oriented shopping area, but I don't see it. And it takes more than a wish to make this come true. If it was a wish, we wouldn't be here today if it was that easy. We need a viable plan, a chance to succeed, not just a wish. There is no plan. What was initially proposed has been changed at least three times since their failure to meet their financial deadline. Because it's not financially viable, there's nobody financially interested in investing in. And I might throw this up for you guys, and I hope you don't be sarcastic, but if it's such a good investment, why don't you guys all throw in a few hundred thousand bucks, and then we can reduce the amount of the shitty city share, because you're the ones making this decision on whether it's a good investment. Throw some of your money in the ring. Okay, that's, I don't mean to...
Are you almost done, Mr. Johnson?
I don't mean to challenge you.
I'd rather be off my house before I do that.
I'm sorry.
I'd pay you off my house before I do that.
Okay. I was being facetious when I said that, I hope I didn't offend any... I hope I didn't offend anybody, but you know where I'm coming from. So how in God's name can the city officials make this dead horse survive when those making the investment, these professionals, can't then see where the retail is going to be viable? And the housing by themselves, I'm not too excited about that. What they're offering is mostly studio and one-bedroom apartments, and I don't see worse. We're just grabbing at straws. And last but not least, and probably more important than anything that's been said at any of these meetings, let's not look upon financing this first building. That is, that's a ripple in the pond. We've got to look at the whole pond. Where are they going to get the money to do the rest of the building? How much more are you prepared? And a lot of yous won't be here because this thing is going to evolve into several administrations. What are you going to do to the next people coming in as far as having to deal with this crap all over again? This is a bad deal. If it was a solid deal, we wouldn't have had all of these meetings.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Joe Gioldino?
Joe Gioldino, 23th Court, Neighbors of Connecticut. Been coming here for about five years. You know, first time I came, pretty pictures all over the place, right? Two rows of people in seats, all false promises. Okay, now, the last eight, 10 months, they need money. Okay? As a builder, there's a couple other builders in the room, we have to put our life on the line to borrow money. Banks aren't giving it. Investors don't want to invest in builders. But yet, we come here on the first building, eight million. Then we have to build a piazza. Then we have to do the drainage for them. What else are we going to do? We're going to give them an income, too? I mean, where are the taxpayers? Where does this stop? Millions and millions and millions of dollars, and what is their risk? I just, all the meetings, I've never heard answers from them. I've heard a lot of false promises. They come from New York with a bunch of false promises. What have they built? What have they succeeded in doing? I've never heard these questions, but I got to see many renderings in this room. Many. It was great. They've got 3,000 orgs t-shirts. Even saw one in Clearwater Beach this past year. Went up to the guy, said, "You from Bristol, Connecticut?" He said, "No, I'm from Albany, New York." Oh, I said, "Where'd you get the shirt?" He said, "I signed the form." Oh, that must have been one of the people on the signature. But why I'm here tonight is for the taxpayers and seniors, and I'm there. How could they afford to live in Bristol if we do get another increase? You people are doing a great job with blight and everything else. We have a ballpark we're looking at. We have the Memorial Boulevard School, which is important to the people in Bristol. Where do we have the millions of dollars to give these people that can't even guarantee us anything? And they have no risk? I'd better see our children advance here in the old school than to take a risk on a developer that has no risk. But someone's got to start thinking of the future seniors that can't afford to live in their own homes, they're living with their children now. You know, tonight, not one picture, no two rows of lawyers representing them, and no plan. It's pretty bad. Right? I was at the last BDTC meeting. I don't think they can answer a question. Not one question that I, as a developer, that I hear them answer. And it's just, it's insane what's going on here. Millions of dollars, and we're going nowhere. But please think of our children and think of the seniors in this town. Thank you.
Tom Doyle.
Tom Doyle, 128, hi. I've lived in Bristol all my life, and several years ago, I thought it'd be really nice to live downtown. I really love our library. I thought it would be great to live there. And so several years ago, I moved into a place I really liked. It's actually just a short walk from Depot Square. But things haven't gone all that well for me. I mean, since then, I've found out the neighborhood isn't that great. My house has been broken into. My house has been vandalized. My car had been vandalized. Occasionally, my mailbag was missing, and I regularly find bits of garbage on my lawn and remnants of drug paraphernalia. Security cameras have helped me quite a bit, but, you know, there's just a lot of blight and crime in my neighborhood. At first, I didn't really pay attention to it until someone was murdered next door to me. And then the next year, police found a drug factory in that apartment.
Mr. Doyle, does this have to do with Depot Square?
I wanted to speak about blight and-
We have to speak to the special agent agenda.
But this does involve Depot Square.
As long as it's Depot Square, that's fine.
So, and last year, they found another drug dealer in my house, next door to me, and three were arrested on my block last year, and I'm not sure that's the end of it. Bristol has problems, and a new building won't fix that. We have a new apartment house right near the library. It has code violations, and tenants there have been in the police log five times since it opened last year. All I know to do is look around and try to report anything in my neighborhood that looks like blight or crime. Once, when talking to a city official, I got some great advice in only four words: "You should just move." I'm embarrassed to admit in public that I sometimes have some regrets about my choice, but I'm still here. If you really want to spend taxpayer money to improve Bristol, you know, I'm all for it. I'm a taxpayer. I don't mind at all. I just think you need to apply it to what's already working. Code enforcement has been doing a great job, especially in the last couple of years, an amazing job. Give them any resources they ask for and then some. Restart the graffiti cleanup that was going on last summer. I'd love to see that again.
That's already going on?
Oh, good. Get a full-time code enforcement officer position again. We used to have one. It seems like there's a lot of work in code enforcement. I know everyone on the committee is overloaded with work. Devote some more resources to the Police Department Narcotics Division. And fix up Memorial Boulevard. That will get people into town. I'm not sure I could sum up my thoughts, but I would just say this: Don't pay to build a building that you think people will really want to live in. Instead, continue cleaning up the area into a neighborhood that people really want to live in, and then I'm sure private investors will turn up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Michael Dodko.
Michael J. Dodko, 116 Lois Road. I'm going to reiterate a lot of the things I said at the BDTC meeting last month. This is a lot of money. At that time, I broke down what the figures were: 8.7 million for the Connecticut Housing Finance Administration, $5 million wanted from the state champ loan, 3.9 loan from the City of Bristol, loan from the City of Bristol, $3 million from the City of Bristol for the infrastructure, $3.1 million financing, the grand total, $23.7 million for this project. It's real money for only six commercial spaces balanced with 100 apartments. This was never the original idea. That was commercial property across the street, oh geez, maybe for 100 years. You know, there was some mix even 100 years ago. That was our North Main Street at one time, even 100 years ago. But this is too much money for only six commercial spaces. It defeats the purpose of the original commercial block. We could build our own piazza, and maybe half the local contractors could build a six-space commercial building and add to it. We don't need a grand total of $23 million bringing us the, I don't want, I don't want even the state level having to put all this money in. This is very reflective of what the problem has been in this country for 30 years. We've been irresponsible with money and financing in this country on the federal level for 30 years. The state is in a very big bind, and now we're going to try to do this on the local level. With a $23 million total project, yes, Bristol would be only responsible for $7 million. But still, this is a lot of money to be risked. Yeah, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, there were many letters about, you know, this could be a positive, and let's, you know, to me, they're all very flowery. Somebody has to pay big money for this. My background was in science, and I know numbers that way. I know, I believe accountants would look at this, and this is not the right balance. We're taking a big risk here. This is risky behavior if we go with this project as it is. Let's take care of it. I believe, let's have the money in the future to take care of our infrastructure, of our parks, and what we already have. We're going to need that money in the future. I'm not an optimist about the United States on a financial basis. We need to keep this town and put this goal in the future. I'm going to go by the timing there with the bell, and I'm just going to cut myself off there. But just quickly, this is too much of a risk. The amount of money involved is too much.
Thank you. Sean Ruest.
Sean Ruest, 53rd Lane, Caster River. Good evening. I keep hearing people say that mixed use of the vision that people in Bristol want. I don't think that's true. And there's a lot of indications. I mean, you've got the POCD survey, which, you know, when asked specifically about apartments, should Bristol encourage it, which doesn't, isn't the same thing as should they throw money at it? People seem to think that that was a good idea, but if you look at all the rest of the questions in the POCD survey, there's no support for housing. Even by Mr. Porter's admission, at the BBC meeting on April 20th, he said, "There's always been a lot of concern over the residential component." So do I think it's time to tell the people of Bristol why we're building residential over there? It's not because, it's the recipe for success, is it? Because if it was, wouldn't we already be building? Or is this the place where we need to grow Bristol, where no money's going? Is that really what we're doing? Are we really, is this really economic development? Is this really about growing Bristol? Because there's an awful lot of information out there that doesn't really indicate that. I mean, what is the unified development approach? I picked this up in Renaissance's office last week. I'm looking at it, and it's got a little diagram. Renaissance is in the middle. And on the outside, we have private property owners, this group together with them in part, and the municipality, and a transit agency, and some key community stakeholders. But I'm not sure where's the rest of Bristol in that picture. We're having a POCD public hearing on Wednesday, and we're not going to wait to find out what goes in. We might just move ahead, like the railway is going to disappear. Like it's not going to be more viable, like there's not going to be any more private capital coming in when there's starting to be more commercial growth along the fast track over in New Britain before it moves its way over into Bristol. I mean, don't the residents of Bristol have a right to know why we're doing this? It's not because this is the only developer, and it's certainly not because everyone in Bristol wants apartments on the site. So I hope before we move forward, we've got a little more truth out there. Thank you.
Brittany Barney.
I have recently decided I would come to this meeting after attending the Bristol Downtown Development Corporation. Ah, sorry. I was just getting into town, knew I wasn't this, so thanks for helping. My name is Brittany Barney. I live and own at 128 Queen Street in Bristol, Connecticut, Federal Hill. But anyways, after, you know, being in attendance at that meeting and hearing the things that were being said, I felt like I would definitely be a necessary voice at this meeting because it seems like everyone that has something bad to say makes a point to come down, and the people that have something good to say, type it in and email it, so I wanted to come. But standing in this building, the first thing that comes to my mind is how it can't be. This building wasn't built on hopes and dreams, but it was built from the ground up by the taxpayers of this city, which I think is a fact that everybody is neglecting to acknowledge that. Our city doesn't exist based on private equity coming in and building everything up. We've come together as a town and made it happen. You know, our service systems aren't being run by a private firm. It's done by our city. So investing in our city is a necessary component to making it a better place to live. Basically, yeah, sorry. I just started jotting things down on my phone. But if you think about the city of Bristol, it actually is kind of a mixed-use venture, if you think of it that in an abstract way. We're a mix of residential and retail spaces coming together through our taxes that we pay to the city. And we have voices on a board that are administering those funds on our behalf. So basically, we are Depot Square in a weird, convoluted way. I think that it's important for the city to at least put our hat in the ring. With anything that's done, nobody here is perfect. So when you put something in as a rough draft, it's not going to be perfect. There's going to be changes that have to be made, and somebody that has better oversight in a project like that should be the ones to make it. You know, I feel like the city council is very qualified, especially after listening to the Bristol Downtown Development Corporation. They are very qualified in their opinions. I'm not an economist. I am not a builder. I am someone that loves the town I live in, and I want to see it flourish. So I feel like by putting our hat in the ring and putting in an application and having someone who is more educated than everyone in this room on this subject tell us what needs to be done in order to make the real moves happen, that if we didn't do that, it would be foolish. And I think it's naive to think that the city wouldn't be able to, would be able to accomplish this without us having a hand in it. Not to mention, when we do have our hand in it financially, we do have more say in what happens, too. Personally, growing up in this town and watching things get torn down and go away and having memories go away, it was, you know, it's pretty disheartening. But I'm proud to be a part of the city now and to be a taxpaying citizen. I made the choice to live here because I like it here. I feel very safe in my community. The people around my home treat it with respect. And, you know, there's always going to be problems. Nothing is perfect. If you drive down from, you know, in West Hartford on Route 44, Bishop's Corner, it's a beautiful area, 100, you know, $500,000 homes. Five minutes down the road, you've got one of the poorest, most blighted sections of Hartford. Nothing is perfect. This town isn't perfect, but we can make it if we get a little more optimistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Dodko.
Good. Ed Dodko, 116 Lois Road. I guess you're going to vote in executive session after this, correct? Then are you going to make a vote tonight?
We may come up, we may come up to be determinate.
Okay. I'm against the project. I'm against staying with Renaissance Downtown since it's really been too long. Hey, my brother doesn't notice. My brother doesn't notice. I'm making a major announcement tonight. I'm going to become a developer, because I have a track record like Renaissance. I've never built anything anywhere, and I don't have any money. Okay? I mean, that's what I say. You're talking about getting the money back in 20 years. I've heard that with the Southeast Bristol Industrial Park. I know what, my family was paid for that, $1.9 million. You still haven't made a dime on that, and we're talking about getting our money back in 20 years. That money, you better off reinvest it someplace else. Try to find a new developer who can actually do something, who can actually build it without coming, always, because it is first step. Because I think if this is phase one, phase two is going to cost the city more, phase three will cost the city even more, yes. If you do go to vote, I hope you vote to, we start anew. Nothing wrong with that. A lot of people do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea.
After all this analysis, what is clear is that developing downtown Bristol is not easy. It's difficult, and why? It's difficult because the Bristol of the future doesn't currently exist. The city of Bristol must first- The city of Bristol must first believe in its future before any investors will. Renaissance Downtown and their team believe in and are prepared to invest in that future. Their plan will provide the citizens of Bristol a vibrant downtown and taxpayers a return on their investment over time. Brand-new apartments with amenities not found in the city today are common throughout central Connecticut, but not in Bristol. Vibrant and walkable downtown areas filled with restaurants and retail shops that I frequent are appearing throughout Connecticut and across America, but are not yet built in Bristol. We all know that banks and financial institutions will not lend enough money to build a brand-new residential apartment, mixed-use building in an uncovert market. Renaissance and its partners have found a way to invest the construction, financing for construction, excuse me, an operation of 100 apartments and are asking the city to believe in itself and invest money for construction or the retail and infrastructure, all of which the plan would pay back to the city plus a return. A positive image is critical when it comes to community development. Revitalization efforts must constantly work to build a community's image and in some cases, change the negative perceptions. This is seen on a small scale in many Main Street communities across the country. There are cities across the country that are changing perceptions through creative investment and development. We need to get our downtowns into good physical shape and create inviting environments for shoppers, residents, and visitors. We need to mirror the other side of Main Street. What's more inviting than a downtown buzzing with activity and people in the streets? But we need retail offices and residential complete this. This will contribute to the tax base everybody is complaining about that we don't have in Bristol. Economic structuring requires investment and creativity. We all know that vacant and desolate lots and storefronts don't help Bristol's positive image. But developing creative uses of this vacant space and constructing a brand-new mixed-use building can suddenly transform something negative into something fun and exciting. Converting unused and unused commercial space into economically productive property helps boost the profitability of the area and creates that positive perception. Asheville, North Carolina, which was in a similar situation in Bristol with 15 acres, I believe, did just what we wanna do. I believe Bristol needs to invest in downtown. Before I end, I wanted to just make sure that everybody on the city council, and I believe the mayor, received the information regarding the cities that invested in their own downtown revitalization. Hope you'll take the time to read those, and if you have any questions, if you want any more, I have a stack full of files on my computer, I can send them all to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Fury?
Hello, Hannah Fury, 19th Southbound Drive. I'm the community liaison with Bristol Rising, and I'd like to read a letter that we received recently, on May 19th, 2015. To whom it may concern? I want to live in a city that has options, options for dining, entertainment, leisure, et cetera. I work at ESPN and moved to Bristol right when I started at ESPN some 10 years ago. ESPN is a fantastic place to be a young professional. People from all over the world work here and work hard. When it comes to times of play hard, Bristol provides zero outlets for us to spend our money in a manner befitting a young professional. We're used to being around what's cool, but there is simply nothing cool going out in Bristol. Living in Bristol is a challenge for many of the same reasons listed above. I wanted somewhere cool to live, but what I found was nothing more than your average one-to-two-bedroom apartment with absolutely no visual appeal. I settled in Huntington Woods because I felt that was best, that was the best I was going to get. And until Barley Vine and Firefly Hollow opened, the best option was catching a former Billboard Top 100 act at Pleasures, and even that suggestion was often struck off simply because the location was not appealing. I wanna see some good music, have a few beverages, then dine on some delicious late-night food. Running over to Subway our new nights minutes before they close loses its appeal quickly. I recently married, and my wife and I decided we wanted more, so we packed up and moved to the CT Shoreline, thus turning our 10-minute commute into an almost 40-minute one, paying almost three times the average rent of an apartment in Bristol, simply because there's more to do. But I believe in Bristol, and I believe it can be great. Mason Jar, Barley Vine, Firefly Hollow, Chunky Tomato, Parkside, and others are a great start, but not enough. My wife and I would definitely move back if our options expanded, and I know I share these sentiments with many young professionals at ESPN. We want to live here. We want to spend our money here. Build this Depot Square and make Bristol a truly great city. Sincerely, James McBadde. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on the Q, Wisconsin and Martin. That's all the public participation we have, so now we are at 6 to go to an executive session. Couldn't have our council, we may invite the whole BDC if you wanna come, as well as your attorney. Ryan, who's coming with you?
Don, myself, and Acton's 11. He's actually in his own meeting.
He'll be popping back.
But I'll come back.
Okay, that's it? You got it? Attorney on?
Yeah.
Who else?
Pat Snow.
Pat Snow. Okay, motion to go to executive session.
Move. Second.
motion to main executive discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
I oppose the motion, pass it.
Got to go in that other meeting.
Motion to come back in session.
I'll move.
Second. Motion to main executive discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose the motion, pass it. Let the president go to take an executive session. Do we have a motion to divorce?
Yes, sir do. I hereby move that the city council adopt the recommendation of the Bristol Downtown Development Corporation dated May 18th, 2015, that the city council not approve the financing, development, and leasing plans submitted by Renaissance Downtowns in Bristol.
That's it. The second, the main executive discussion. Hearing none.
Motion.
A roll call, starting my front left. Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Can I ask, Jen, can you just come up and give everybody a brief overview of what this means now? Please? Just so everybody understands.
Everybody say it with me.
Aaron Simwitz.
I got it, Virginia.
People don't remember that. John Ferris Simwitz, chairperson of Downtown Development Corporation. I think what you're asking me to do is talk about what happens now that this vote has been taken.
That's correct.
Okay. And speaking as the representative of the Downtown Development Corporation, not in my capacity as an attorney, is how I'm operating these comments, it is my understanding that the contract has no automatic termination provisions. The contract remains in force until, at a minimum, June 30th, or if a CHAMP application is filed, until there's either a determination on the CHAMP application, or if ultimately CHAMP money is awarded, until December, which would be when the closing would take place. So they, right now, Renaissance remains to be exclusive developer for the downtown Depot Square parcel.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to main executive discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Aye. Oppose the motion, pass it.